Oh, I'm going by the one on the computer, so we got a matter of seconds here. And we're live on YouTube as, as we sit here too. Ready when you are, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the November 6th meeting of the Planning Commission, City of Lakewood. First on our list, will you please call role, Mr. DeBrol?
Lynn Larson.
Present.
Mark Air is excused. Philip Lindholm is excused.
Present.
Thank you. Ellen Talbo.
Present.
Sharon Wallace.
Present.
Robert Estrada.
Present.
You have corn.
Thank you. First on our agenda is the approval of our minute, meeting minutes dated October the 2nd, 2024. You all have a chance to look at them. I'll accept a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Larson, second by Dr. Wallace. All those in favor, please indicate with an eye.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Agenda updates, Ms. Spear.
No changes, Mr. Chair.
Public comment, I see no one and I don't have any sheets, so no comments. Thank you.
No, sir.
No public hearings this evening, no unfinished business, so first things first or second things first. Action on the 2024 locally initiated shoreline master plan update. Ms. Spear, please.
So, um, in your packet, you'll see the memo regarding this item. Following the minutes that were provided for you for approval. If you remember, it was a month ago, there was a public hearing regarding the shoreline master program locally initiated amendments that the city has brought forward to you in partnership with the Department of Ecology. This is a slightly different process than most of what the city does because it is in partnership with the state agency. So the public hearing that was held on October 2nd was actually the only one that the city will hold. It was joint with Ecology. And tonight, what you would be doing is taking action to recommend what's now in Resolution 2024-09. Some changes to update the critical areas ordinance to be consist, excuse me, the shoreline master program to be consistent with the 2024 critical area amendments that were done as part of the big periodic review. They are not lengthy, but what they essentially do is clarify within the shoreline master program itself, which is now included in the municipal code at Title 16, starting January of 2025. Which water bodies are going to be governed going forward by the shoreline master program versus by the critical areas ordinance? Because there are now different rules and different buffer widths, as well as different water bodies now governed by each. So if you were to come down. Um, I'm sorry, we did receive public comments following the official hearing from the Department of Natural Resources, and so that's what's included in your packet as well. Essentially, what they're saying is we have no corrections made or to suggest. So just a couple of notes at the bottom for the next time the city does the full review, which would be in 2029. Some things to consider as part of the next shoreline master program update. But looking at Resolution 2024-09, what you have are the whereas clauses, which give the background of how this all came to be and why we're talking about this earlier than in the 2029 regular review. Again, this is related to changes to the 2024 critical areas ordinance as part of the periodic review that was recently conducted. And there are particular findings that the planning commission is asked to find. A, it will not foster uncoordinated and piecemeal development of the state's shorelines. B, the amendments are consistent with applicable policies and standards of the state's Shoreline Management Act. C, procedural rule requirements were followed. And D, it satisfies master program guideline requirements and substantive standards. All of those have been satisfied. And so what you see then are the actual suggested changes and in what will become Chapter 1610-030, where we talk about the ordinance itself that is referred, this is just updating the codified ordinance number. So moving it to ordinance 813. The larger, more substantive change is on the following pages. First of all, exemptions are being emphasized in the exemption section that when you have utility line trenching proposed, it will not be allowed in category one or two wetlands, and it is also discouraged in three and four category wetlands. Again, an update here in underline of the new section in code that was adopted earlier this year. And then what you have here are crossed out lines of text. This is because these items are being moved over into Title 14 rather than being talked about in the shoreline master program. So there are buffer widths now specifically in the critical areas ordinance rather than this reference back to the shoreline master program for buffer widths. And that is all that you have as the changes in front of you. So unless there are any questions, the recommended motion would be to approve Resolution 2024-09 as presented this evening, unless you want to discuss, edit, amend, et cetera. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Spear. Any of the commissioners have any questions regarding this proposal?
I just have one. I just have one comment, and that is that it is well thought through, that it's cleaned up, and it seems to work quite well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Larson. I see no hands up. Ms. Wallace, any questions?
No, no, thank you.
Okay. Just for a point of clarification now, the majority of these changes were imposed, shall we say. It's, they were because we had to make corrections. But there wasn't any item there that we inserted. That is that we took it upon ourselves to make a change too.
What you have in front of you is a, an early change to the shoreline master program because of there's two separate calendars, we've got every 10 years, the shoreline master program has to get amended or reviewed at least. And every 10 years, the comprehensive plan and development regs have to be amended. There are five years different from each other. So this year, we did a 2024 big periodic review, you guys had your hands all over that for many, many months. And now that that is done, there's this inconsistency because the shoreline master program wasn't part of that big review and it's not scheduled for review for another five years. So what we're trying to do here is, is take a step that's perfectly authorized in state law to do a specific and limited review and remove the parts out of the shoreline master program that now have been adopted this year as part of the critical areas ordinance. It is not anything above and beyond what state law requires, but we're just reconciling the two documents.
Okay. Questions, any other questions?
No.
Okay, shall we call for a vote, please?
So moved.
Second.
Do we need to spell out the resolution?
I would just suggest that the wording in the minutes be to approve Resolution 2024-09, adopting changes to the shoreline master program as presented.
Okay, and that's what Ms. Dr. Wallace said.
Thank you, that's what I said, I agree with that.
And, Mr. Larson, second.
Yes.
So we have all in favor, please indicate with an eye.
Aye.
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 Oppose? Thank you. So passed. Ms. Spear, next.
Thank you. So now we're going to get into discussions of, pardon me, pending things, stuff that's been ongoing in the background all year, but is going to start to come more to the forefront and in front of you, probably early in 2025. And this is related to a couple of different items. The urban forestry program, the energy and climate change implementation plan, and then other related requirements under state law now to plan for, again, climate change items and issues. So I'm going to share screen once again to begin walking through this information. So I'm trying to think how many of you would have been around when this was done. In any event, it was in 2022. There was an energy and climate change chapter to the comprehensive plan that was adopted. So that was before state law required it, and there was a follow-on 15-item, three-year work plan to implement that element of the comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2022. Fast forward to right now, out of the 15 items, nine of them are done. Four are ongoing, and they were intended to be so, they were written to be an ongoing item. And then there are two that are not started yet. What we have in the comprehensive plan that's still in effect until the end of this year is land use policy 60, which says the city will establish an urban forestry program. And there is also the adoption of a tree canopy coverage goal citywide of 40% by 2050 and directs the city to consider increasing canopy and environmental equity when evaluating tree canopy distribution.
A good question.
Sure.
The 40%, I believe that's what the council wanted, and, but we had recommended something lesser, I believe.
The planning commission, if memory serves, recommended 30%, and the council went with 40.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So now fast forward again to 2024, we have a new comprehensive plan that will go into effect in 2025. And in it, there is a new natural environment element as well as an energy and climate change element, so there's now two, and they have slightly different focuses in the comprehensive plan itself. But regardless, both of them still talk about the creation of an urban forestry program and anticipate that there would be work plans to move the policy into, into the real world. So what's being recommended, and we're nowhere near action, but this is the idea, and we would be seeking your feedback, not only this evening, but in future meetings as well, to create a 15 to 20-year implementation plan. So short, mid, and long-term actions identified, which is more touchy-feely, less specific, and less let's see, not budgetary information included, bad, bad way to say that, but in other words, we don't know how much it'll cost yet because it's so far in the future, okay? But then there would also be a new three-year work plan, which would be more detailed and would have more additional information about staffing resources, maybe outside resources, and budgetary needs. So if you go and look at the 15-item work plan that was adopted in 2022, these are the items that either are ongoing still or not started. The rest are all complete, and those were included as an attachment in this evening's packet. What is not started? Developing a five-year plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. The other one that's not started is creating regional electric vehicle infrastructure in partnership with neighboring cities, the county, and the state. The reason those are not started is we've basically been waiting for the partnership to form to the point where we can get going on it, and it's starting to get there to start talking about this. And with the reducing greenhouse gas emission five-year plan, we were waiting for templates and other guidance to come from the Department of Commerce, Puget Sound Regional Council, the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency, and others. And those are starting to come forward as well. So while they're not started now, they will likely be started here within the next year to 18 months. The rest of the items that are ongoing. Creating some sort of regional approach and best practices to address climate change. Lakewood was a founding city for and is continuing to participate in what's called the Pierce County Climate Conversation. That is something that the county council chair at this point leads, but at least half, if not more than half of the jurisdictions in this, in the county are all participating. And then there has also been change in the countywide planning policies to reflect new state law regarding climate planning. The second one that's ongoing is the continued advocacy for improving and expanding I-5 over the Nisqually Delta. This is something that is a high priority for the Nisqually Indian Tribe, for the South Sound Military and Communities Partnership, and the City of Lakewood. And it's an interesting and unusual partnership because it's Pearson-Thurston County jurisdictions as well as the Nisqually Indian Tribe, and it's for varying reasons. Everything from traffic congestion on I-5, because that now is the choke point after the improvements here in Pierce County. For the Nisqually Tribe, it's because the Nisqually Delta is, because of the way that bridge design was done however many years ago, it is more and more forcing the, the waterway into unnatural paths. And there is an increasing threat of actually overtopping I-5 in future flood events. And so if you can imagine I-5 there being overtopped for multiple days after a storm event of some kind, the, the chaos that would cause. And then for SSMCP and Lakewood, it's also a military issue. It is something where, again, I-5 is a major corridor for them, and national security relies on I-5. So we need to make sure that it is expanding and, and operating well. So to date, just so you're aware, 75 million in state funding has been secured with Lakewood's partnership in SSMCP and with the tribe, but the, and with Thurston Regional Planning Council and some other specific jurisdictions. But that effort will continue for years to come because it's an enormous bill in the multiple billions in order to do what they're planning to do. They are down to two alternatives at this point, and over the next couple of years, they'll be figuring out environmental impact and what's the, the best route to go with how big the bridge is, how wide, whatever, what that will all look like. The next ongoing item is updating our city codes per what happens at the state level regarding building and construction codes to address climate change hazards. So if you were to think in Lakewood, probably the highest hazard for us is water level changes and increased flooding. And so there's already in the city's code, some requirements to, for instance, build on stilts, for lack of a better word, but raise the elevation of buildings in order to let floodwaters flow underneath them. There's parts of the city where that applies for commercial buildings. But every three years, this, the Washington State Building Code Council reviews international building codes, decides at the state level if they want to take any changes to those codes. Once they make their decision, the local jurisdictions have a year after the state building code does that to decide if they're just going to adopt those codes as the building code council recommends, or if they're going to do individual amendments. So if you were to look in Lakewood's municipal code, you would see the, in Title 15, the Washington State Building Code is hereby adopted with these changes, X, Y, Z, whatever they may be. So as time goes by, that, that's just something that we have to watch as a city and update every time the state does. The last item from the 2022 action plan, or work plan that isn't finished, it's ongoing, is the creation of an urban forest management slash mastery forestation plan. This is part of what we'll be talking about tonight. But over the two years since 2022, the city has engaged the Evans School of Governance and Public Policy to draft a guidance report for the city with best practices about how to create an urban forestry plan. Then we also this year have done two major efforts, excuse me. Sorry. We have engaged a consultant facet Northwest to conduct a citywide tree inventory of public trees and trees on large, either semi-public like school districts and the Western State Hospital campus, St. Clair Hospital, those kinds of larger tracts, some of the colleges, their tree inventories as well. And then also taking a look at urban heat. So in August, when it was some of the hottest weekend days of the year, there were actually volunteers that physically got in their cars and drove around to different parts of Lakewood and did tests in the morning, afternoon, and evening, how hot it was in various parts of the city, and we now have that report back.
Ms. Spear.
Yes.
Going back to number 14, please. Did you indicate why we hadn't started the?
Oh, I'm sorry. That is basically, we're, we're waiting on the partnership to form, but part of the Pierce County Climate Conversation Group, as well as some other transportation planning groups are starting to talk about this. And there is now starting to be state and federal dollars available to help fund electric vehicle stations, charging stations, and maintenance and operations. So we just, we're not at the point yet where we can either apply for funds or say, this is where we would be planning for this.
The city does have a account of the number of EV vehicles?
I believe they do. It's not very many, and there's been conversation in the past about installing them in parks. That's where other jurisdictions have done it sometimes. And because Lakewood's parks close at dusk, there is a desire to not have them there, so you don't have the temptation for folks to sit there overnight when it's supposed to be closed. So we're trying to figure out where other logical places would be to install the, the stations.
Mr. Larson.
I have two questions. First, with regard to number 12, every two years seems like quite often to have to do that work, and it seems to me to be a burden on the city to have to update it every two years. Is, is that re, is, is that called for in the state law? Do we have no choice? Okay.
Yeah.
We have no choice.
And, and as it says, or as otherwise dictated, what happens sometimes is either the state building code council isn't ready to work that fast itself, or the legislature's not ready to work that fast, or the international building codes, it takes longer than that to get new versions. So it says two years, but it is often three or four.
Okay, that makes more sense. My second question is with regard to item 15. It troubles me continually about this 40% urban forest that was passed over our recommendation as planning commission to not have that percentage that high. And I wonder if we have in our monitoring and our inventorying a better handle on what it is we have and what 40% really means. I worry about the ability to provide the housing and density in a reasonable manner in the city because of this rule. And I'd like to know if there's a process for monitoring, revisiting, checking that, that criterion.
Oh, well, it was a city council action to adopt that, and so it would be up to them to change that canopy number if they ever wanted to. But absolutely, what we're doing with the inventory right now, and I don't have the final report from our consultant, we're expecting it in early December. But that will show the status quo, and it will also identify areas that are the best based on a couple of criteria for, for planting new trees. What we could do as a first step is just say, okay, assuming those places were planted, how much does that get us in additional tree canopy cover? And then the next steps over time will be, okay, new development, housing densification, whatever else is happening with the transportation corridor, this is our, our ups and downs in our tree numbers. Does it make sense to keep shooting for this 40% tree canopy cover by 2050 or not? And it'll be something that we'll probably end up doing every couple of years, reports back to the city's council on. And they'll be able to note if it's making sense to maybe change that.
I expect it to take some time to really know till we get the criterion and the data all mapped and to see what 40% really means. And, and to work in those parts of the city that don't have as many trees as, as opposed to the other ones that maybe have too much an aging umbrella that is well, is sometimes causing a hazard in, in wind conditions and such. So they're just the, the ongoing natural evolution of the tree canopy itself is a factor that I don't think we've been able, because we haven't had good data, to understand. But I continually concerned, maybe just because my feelings are hurt because we got overridden by the lobby. But the other part is that, you know, want to make sure we are making our recommendations based on good data. And it looks like this year, we're going to have the start of that good data.
To, to Mr. Larson's point, I think, I, I don't think that it's that there's more data available to the council than was given to us and provided to us. And therefore, they made a decision based on the additional data. I don't think that's the case, the same data, just maybe interpreted a little bit different. As indicated, maybe they're looking at it strategically, and we're looking at it technically, don't know. But Ms. Spear, regarding the other subjects, later, later on, we'll discuss why some of the recommendations that we made last couple of months were not taken as a whole, only partial. She will explain that to us.
It's all good.
Okay, thank you.
I accept it to a degree.
Ms. Spear.
You have Ellen Talbo with her hand up.
Ms. Talbo, please.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I hope you all can hear me.
We can.
Okay, good, thank you. Just for a point of clarification, I just wanted to ask, is the, by 40%, do we mean 40% of total land use square footage or 40% of asphalt surface? Or, or some other 40%, like 40% of what?
The, the way it's defined in code is simply the statement, 40% tree canopy cover. So it is looking at it from the air, how much of the ground, whatever is underneath that canopy, is covered by that canopy.
Okay. Okay, all right, I understand, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Spear.
Okay. So in addition to all of what we just walked through in terms of what the city itself has done, in 2023, there was a new bill called HB 1181, and you're going to hear me say that a lot over the next few months, where they made some significant changes to the Growth Management Act itself, as well as added significant new requirements on local governments to plan for what was called climate change and resiliency. So planning for the fact that, that climate is changing and whatever that means for your particular corner of the world geographically, but also resiliency to that. So anticipation and preventing and mitigating damage as much as possible. So first and foremost, in the comprehensive plan itself, the regulations and regional plans, there needs to be a support of reducing greenhouse gas or GHG emission reduction, and also a reduction in vehicle miles traveled per capita, meaning single occupancy vehicles driving around and/or people driving, whether they're with a group or not, rather than in mass transit. The other is also fostering resiliency for climate impacts and natural hazards. So we received $25,000 for, between now and next June, to do the first piece of what is ultimately going to be a six-year work plan. We anticipate funds in '25 and also 2027 for those following state bienniums to do additional work to help cover what the city is going to have to do. So the first six months of 2025, the process will be making sure that the parks and recreation element of our comp plan includes the tree canopy evaluation, so hooray. We're going to be perfectly on time with the report that we're about to get from our consultant. But in addition to that, there needs to be in the utilities elements, the location, both existing and proposed, and capacity of all existing and proposed utilities, including electrical, telecommunications, and natural gas systems. This data we have some of, but we'll have to maybe do a little bit of tweaking before Jan, or excuse me, June of 2025. And then we also have changes required in the capital facilities element. So those structures, vertical or horizontal, that the city owns, we need to have an inventory of that. But also the utilities and other public entities in the city, including quote, green infrastructure. So for instance, stormwater ponds that are detention rather than retention, or something where you've got alternate use of water, gray water type of, of uses. So those types of things also need to be identified in the inventory that you create. Moving forward to the next biennium, so this would start next July and move into 2027. There's our more robust requirements, and again, this gets into the comprehensive plan to start with. The climate change and resiliency element, which is brand new, but we already have to amend a little bit. Having a local greenhouse gas emission inventory, some of which we will be able to gather from our existing tools that we used to put the plan together a few years ago. Do a new vehicle miles travel, traveled per capita study. And then also look at emission reductions that we can incorporate into the comprehensive plan goals. Also need to take a look at local climate impacts to the City of Lakewood, and again, some of this has been done, we'll just need to update it for our updated element. We need to look at our existing plans and policies for resilience opportunities, gaps, and barriers. We need to look at climate vulnerability and risk for local assets. So for instance, if, if City Hall were located, I guess, let's say Spring Brook, where there's a lot of flooding risk, would we need to be doing something to get the city hall ready to? would we need to be doing something to get the City Hall ready to handle that and/or consider relocating City Hall because it would have significant damage in a flood event, something like that? And then develop and prioritize science-based climate resilience goals and policies. The other thing in the next biennium will be in our land use. So looking at green spaces, urban and community forests, looking at achieving environmental justice, and this would be in terms of where everybody lives and works and where are the amenities. So if you probably know this, if you've looked at our tree canopy high level maps that were done a few years ago, Tillicum, Woodbrook, Springbrook, Montevista, Lakeview, some of the other areas on the eastern and southern part of the city, in part just natural development, but also the economic realities for those who live there. That is where there is less trees as well. And so looking at where we would target planting trees first to increase canopy, you'll see that the map is recommending that that would be where the city would start with that. And then looking also at wildfire risk and looking how to mitigate the risk to lives and property as a result. The final biennium is really focused on transportation because in part, there's a lot that's required. So they're giving you a lot of time to get there. Looking at multimodal transportation demand, so not just cars, but also walking, biking, anything non-auto. Looking at forecasting of traffic demands outside of the city as well as inside to see how the city reacts to and anticipates its people and commuters traveling out of the city and also those coming in. Updating the element in the comprehensive plan to include the estimated level of service impacts. Looking at an inventory of the active transportation facilities, and again, active is referring to whether you're sitting in your car where it's a passive versus active, you're riding a bike, you're walking, you're doing something else that's more physically active. That's what that means. So for the locally owned arterials, the regional and local transit routes, the state owned or operated transit routes, and active transportation facilities that are also state owned. And then also there needs to be an American with Disabilities Act plan. So all of this, the physical looking at the current uses, the demand forecast within the city and without, and then the level of service impacts over time need to happen between '25 and '27.
These are all items that the staff is going to look at and recommend updates and bring to us.
Yes, and assuming that we get our funding, there will be a lot of technical assistance and new studies or updates to existing studies that will need to occur. And so that will all be brought to you somewhat similar to what the big periodic review looked like. It'll be multiple meetings and that sort of thing, but these again are spread out over multiple years, so it won't be as intense. The other things that have to happen between '27 and '29 would be urban heat resilience strategy, native and climate resilient planting plans for municipal projects. So say there needed to be an update out at Fort Silicon Park to the pavilion, or here again at City Hall, taking a look at the LPD location offsite from here. When any disturbance to their land or the building is remodeled, perhaps there's an opportunity there to update the vegetation and the parking lots to be a little more climate resilient. And then updating the urban forestry program. So if we are able to put something together here in the next year to year and a half, there would just be this beginning review and maintenance of that plan as things change, as things get completed, and more data becomes available. So to start, in addition to the 25,000 we've received from the state to begin, we've also applied for a federal equity, excuse me, energy efficiency community block grant that we hope we're going to get without any issue. It is not competitive, meaning we're not fighting with other jurisdictions to get the money. It's just if we dotted all the i's and crossed the t's, we should get this money. But it's to help with developing an energy plan. So that's again, we were just talking about the energy, or excuse me, electric vehicle charging stations, that would be one thing. Others may be, what can we do to partner with PSE Tacoma Power, Lakewood Light and Power, to come up with something that's effective for saving energy, reducing greenhouse gas emissions through energy production, et cetera? And then looking at what we hope to do in addition to the electric vehicle infrastructure plan, potentially looking at other energy sources. Just a note, when the city first adopted its own plan on climate change, there was an analysis about where there was opportunity in Lakewood for solar, either on municipal buildings or on private property. And as you can imagine, with the trees in the city, that is where there's limitations on the kind of success the city and its residents or businesses might see with solar. However, there may be other things coming along in the next few years that could be a new idea that the city and its communities could embrace. So we have in our current plan, maintaining an urban forestry program, promoting tree health and increasing tree coverage citywide. This is where you also again see the 40% tree canopy cover by 2050, as well as a specific mention of that creating the urban forestry program. We have also under energy and climate change, another reference to the urban tree canopy. So two different elements are both talking about that. This is a map that I was referring to just a moment ago. So in 2022, when the tree code regulations were updated, this high level analysis of the tree cover was done. And you'll see the darker green is where there is a higher tree canopy cover for the city. The lighter green is where it's lower. So in particular, Montevista, Lakeview, and then over in Springbrook is where you see the least amount of tree canopy in the city. Lighter green again on the eastern side of the city for the most part. Down in Tillicum and Woodbrook, it's actually a little bit higher tree canopy cover. However, those are areas that with densification since 2022 with industrial has probably changed, as well as the fact that now Tillicum is in one of the areas of the city where in the future, additional housing density may happen. Those areas may be changing just because of other land development pressures that will happen. This is the map that shows the prioritized areas for near-term planting. And this is based on looking at the current tree canopy cover, the types of land uses that are there, the socio and economic information we have about the populations in these parts of the city and the land use that's planned. So this big one up here would be along Bridgeport, if you would think of just before you get to Walmart and over to the east. Down here again, part of Lakeview, part of down into Springbrook, part of Woodbrook. And then over here, you've got some areas of, I don't know the neighborhood name over here, I'm sorry, but West Lakewood. This is an area that's close to Pierce College, and this area is just before you hit Fort Silicon Park. But these are the areas where in 2022 was identified as priority planning areas. What we will do is when we get our 2024 inventory results, verify that this still is an accurate recommendation. But that would be coming before you as part of what you would see next year.
Mr. Larson?
A question is, why is there a line dividing Springbrook area as to what's important to tree canopy and what is not?
Because when they did the analysis of the tree canopy, the area to the south, what is that, southwest, there was more tree canopy cover there already.
I understand. And the second question is, what is heat resilience?
Say that again?
Heat resilience.
Oh, it is looking at, for instance, the type of tree or the type of other vegetation that can survive over time as the temperatures increase. And it's also talking about having more cover to reduce temperature at the ground level. So whether it's a physical carport or whether it's a tree that gives you shade, you've got additional heat resilience for the things that are underneath that cover.
Thank you.
Ms. Spear? So a while back, the city enacted a permitting requirement for the cutting down of trees. This was a 2022 map. And that happened after.
This was part of that analysis for when the code was updated.
Ah, so we took into consideration the number of trees that were in fact cut before the permitting process came into being.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. These are the next few maps, are results that came from the heat island mapping exercise this summer. It was in partnership with the Department of Health for Pierce County as well as Kappa, forgive me, I can't remember what that stands for. It's a national group that came into the area to do this. Pierce County wide, but they also focus specifically on Lakewood with this project. So these are afternoon temperatures, and it's relative. So blue doesn't mean cold, it means cooler than the orange or red areas. So if you look at the little bar on the right, the legend, you'll see the blue is actually about 77 degrees. And the top red part would be 87. So what this is tracking on this particular map, up by Oakbrook, over by Pierce College, these blue areas would have been at this point of the day about 77 degrees. Down here out in unincorporated county where you see this red, that would be near the 87. But these parts of Lakewood that are in varying colors of orange, they're going to be somewhere in between those two numbers. But it's showing you in relative terms that there are areas in the city that are cooler and areas in the city that are warmer. And it's a spread of up to 10 degrees. There's more detail available, we just don't have it yet. This is the generalized map. What we also have done this year, as I mentioned, is that tree, yes.
Mr. Larson?
It would seem to me that this map is incongruous with the previous map and my previous question as to the division in Springbrook. In this case, Springbrook says that the part of it doesn't need studying, part of it does, but all of it has the same heat signature. And it's pretty extreme heat signature. I just wonder if there's some congruity that needs to take place between these two perspectives.
Well, what we would have to do, and we will do, is just take a look at all the assumptions behind both of them. They were done at different times by different groups of people. And understand better, I can provide you more detail as we get into this next year, why there is this separation here versus what you see here on the ground. So I'm happy to do that.
Here's your question.
Sure. This map is showing you the results as of end of September of where the 2024 tree inventory has actually had people physically look at individual trees. So all of these circles, if you were to zoom into this map more, are individual trees that were mapped. And you would see, for instance, up in residential areas, but you also see over in the commercial industrial areas, there were on the arterials, mapping done of those trees. You see a vacancy here on, for instance, Fort Silicon Park and then the Western State Hospital campus. That is not because we didn't do an inventory there, that is because it was done in a different way. Because the stands there of trees were so dense, they didn't try to walk through it person, or tree by tree and do the mapping that they did elsewhere. What they did is use what's called a flat process, forest, something LAT. And it's a LiDAR process that is roughly 95% accurate to the number of trees. But they can certainly see from the top and from what they're doing on the ground with the LiDAR material, the type of tree canopy that they get there. So we're just about finished with the report that will come out. It will include the information from these actual physical measurements and characteristics gathering of the trees. So we will end up with a really extensive table and data set that says this type of tree, this type of health, recommendations maybe for maintenance if it's starting to struggle, where in the city has more trees versus less per some geographic area. But then we will also have the information that is provided at roughly the same data sets for those areas, again, where there was not on-the-ground review, but there was the flat process. So again, up in Oakbrook also, while there was the walking around, there was also in the wildlife refuge area, as well as down here, for instance, by the golf club. This is all area that was done by that more electronic way. We did collect about 11,800 tree items, or 11,800 tree worth of data, thank you. And you'll see here where in the city which parks were covered. You will also see the public institutional grounds, number of schools. We were able to partner really well with Clover Park School District to do this, as well as the St. Clair Campus and Pierce College Campus. And then this GIS based data that I was talking about, Pierce College, Pierce County Park at Sealy Lake, Ward's Lake Park, and the South Puget Sound Wildlife Area. The last piece we're working as a foundational piece to start talking about this new implementation plan for natural environment and climate change is the 2023 report that came out from Evan's School about how to actually start an urban forestry program. And so some of you may remember that discussion that was had last year, where this was brought to the planning commission and council, I think in May. Long story short, there were four rough, four large recommendations that they provided significantly more data about and more guidance about. But it's about how to create it. It's not just, this is what should go in. It's how to engage your public, how to make sure that the city has its proper resources assessed and ready to go when you're ready to take a particular step. And then also making sure that the organizational structure ongoing is going to be able to maintain this program. So all of those things are part of the recommendations, and there's data in that report that breaks this down a little more, gives us good examples from the surrounding jurisdictions that are further along in this process as well. From that report, you'll see five-year incremental steps to take to actually get this up and going in a healthy way. So completing the phased tree assessment, we did part of that this year. Looking at our tree maintenance practices and maintaining tree, urban tree canopy, that's what UTC stands for. For instance, is what you see in year one, all the way up to year five, where you've got a plan, a program in place, you've got identified sources of funding, you've got identified human resources to go toward this program, et cetera. So what are we going to do with all these different various items of information to help inform the city on its next steps? Five-year plan for reducing greenhouse gas emissions is pending. Coordinating a regional electric vehicle infrastructure strategy and developing and promote an urban forestry plan are all part of the '22 stuff that we're going to bring forward. Then we're going to synthesize the policies, the data, and the action from all of these things, the '22 tree cover analysis, the 2022 comprehensive plan, energy and climate change element, the 2024 updates to our comprehensive plan, that state bill 1181 that requires six years' worth of work, the information that we should get out of the work funded by the federal grants, and then the 2024 urban heat island study and the 2024 Lakewood tree inventory report. All of that will be the basis for what would come to you eventually as a draft 20-year plan as well as a three-year work plan. We hope to get this to you probably late spring, April, May timeframe. And then it would be coming to council once you completed your review and action on that. And that is my report on this, Mr. Chair. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from any commissioner? Mr. Larson?
Having this planned, for instance, a restoration plan. But the restoration hasn't been studied to know, or the existing situation hasn't been studied to the point where we know that some restoration is called for. So how can we establish the fact that we're going to have a restoration plan for something that isn't defined that even exists? That's my first question. The second is probably more global, and that is, have we measured the greenhouse gases in the city of Lakewood to know that they're excessive? Or is this part of a larger global thing that we're just a part of because the state legislature says we have to do it?
City of Lakewood, when it established voluntarily its energy and climate change chapter a couple of years ago, partnered with both ICLI, which is a local government national agency that tracks air quality, as well as Google Environmental Impact Explorer. Both of those tools were used to look at Lakewood-specific information as much as possible of sources of greenhouse gas emissions. It's complicated, as you can imagine, by I-5, of course, because that's going through the city and significantly affecting the results. And also limiting how much difference, anything that would happen within the city of Lakewood would make to the overall output if you've got I-5 continuing to go through the city. So all of that to say, yes, we have information specific to Lakewood. The city council adopted it prior to what the state is now requiring. And so what we're going to do is look at what we already have. And so what we're going to do is look at what we already have, see if it fits and meets all of the requirements or not of what the state now says, and adapt uh and amend as necessary.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Talbo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to express that um, well, I think that this is a quite a bit of work and good work um on staff's part. Uh so I applaud your efforts, especially for this is a load of work coming up for at least twenty twenty-five. So and that's not to include the rest of the work plan that is quite a bit of work coming after that out into twenty-seven. So um I applaud your efforts. You have a, you have a quite a work plan ahead of you. So I wish, I wish you the best. But I would, I also want to say on the on the point about um the urban forestry plan, I think what will help make the plan success, most successful, and especially towards implementation is is being is being specific as 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 we can be about the objective and the mission of the plan because um I have, in my own experience in my day job, I've, I've experienced, you know, these forestry plans that have the broad objective of trying to meet canopy cover. But it's not specific enough as to what aim. And so that's why I kind of asked earlier if we're trying to um cover, if we're trying to meet a a target that is geared towards coverage of a s- of a type of surface versus an overall surface. Because I think that where tree canopy is critical and effective is is in trying to mitigate um the effects of urban heat islands and and asphalt um microclimate heat. And so, so I guess that's kind of my takeaway is is trying to be specific about what, to what end is is the purpose and aim of the plan um trying to target uh, you know, in in terms of mitigating certain impacts and effects. Um, so that's just one general comment I wanted to make is just trying to be specific about about the goal and the mission of the plan because I hope, I I hope that that will also help prioritize implementation. Um, it's one thing to have a goal and then you create a policy to do all these street trees everywhere, but street, street trees have a maintenance impact. And if there's other um treatments that you can do to a, to a street to provide a green, a green street like um um biotreatment, uh other types of treatment on the street that are climate impactful, um but yet, you know, doesn't, doesn't necessarily have to be a tree, a, a, a street tree aligned uh street with street trees that have a a maintenance impact as well. So um, that was that, that point about that. And then also, I think too, I would encourage that in the formation of the plan, also, I think there's ways to, that a, that a plan like this could result in programs that involve citizen-based input. So like, for example, like a um a future program that is a citizen volunteer uh tree inventory program where folks and whoever from throughout the city want to help contribute counting trees every, every few years. Um, you know, those types of engagement programs help uh, I think, help make plans like these a success when people can can participate and and contribute towards, towards um, towards their environment. So I just wanted to express those two comments. Uh and then um, of course, on the transportation piece, um I did want to ask and also make the comment about and the analysis that you do for the travel demand forecasting. Um, if, if you are doing any forecasting work through the downtown um uh loop, green loop grant work. Um, you may be able to expand the number of, expand the scope of the analysis to include more um a wider coverage of the network of the city. And in that way, you may be able to save yourself some effort um uh towards, you know, towards twenty-seven when you have to do this uh eleven eighty-one update because you've done some of the transportation work uh more upfront. Um, and I guess that's, that's a comment, but also a question if, if any forecasting work is included in that green street plan. That's it. Thank you.
Uh, if I could respond. Um, so I will try to respond uh in a logical way. So let's start with the urban forestry uh launch and being specific with the objective of the plan. It has always been uh the way the Energy and Climate Change Chapter from twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two uh and the focus of a potential urban forestry plan to be public property, street trees. Uh at the same time, in order to achieve things like a forty percent citywide tree canopy goal, there's going to have to be uh private volunteer um participation by choice. So trying to get people to plant trees themselves, not just relying on the city doing something to a particular street next to the, to the road to achieve what's, what's the idea. And the um urban forestry plan will be fiscally constrained, meaning uh we've got this many people and this much money to work on this. So how can we be as strategic as possible in what we try to implement? A for success, but B, just because this, these are our resources and we got to be real about it. And I think what will, we will also be able to do is bring the public into designing those priorities because the intent as well is to make sure there is buy-in to um have, like you say, Commissioner uh Talbo, the the idea of maybe they help us over time with with future inventory work, but also they are understanding the why and deciding if they want to take on anything themselves in addition to what the city might do. As far as the transportation elements, um over the next couple of years, the demand forecast, our RACE grant, which is focused on updating the identification of needed transportation improvements in the downtown. Because the last time that whole network was looked at and trying to figure out what projects were needed was in twenty eighteen. Taking a look at that, absolutely, we're going to try to stretch the map as much as we can because obviously the streets within the downtown don't stop and start within the downtown. They're, you know, connected across the city and then beyond. And so we'll try to figure out how to, again, being very sneaky and strategic about it, how much data we can gather that is legitimately part of improving the downtown network. Um, and trying to um look at more than just trees, I guess, going back to one of the other, other comments that Ms. Talbo made. Looking at what other uh ideas might be uh effective in Lakewood for climate change preparation, less energy usage uh through, for instance, uh passive, passive heat controls versus uh air conditioning, whatever it is. All of that is going to be rolled into what gets chewed on internally, but then also with the public absolutely, and then coming to you in the council.
Dr. Wallace?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Um, there, there are a lot of white tags on the large trees along where the proposed development is for the three thousand units, and those are mature hundred and fifty-foot evergreen trees that offer a great deal of of shading and and reduce heat in that heat island area. Is there any way to preserve that buffer? Um, because if you plant a small tree there, it's not going to do as well with that heat, and it is quite a heat island, but right now it's much less so. And so that might be an idea to be considered. The second one is there may be parcels where people are willing to work with the city uh to add trees. Uh and maybe we could do some creative things like maybe uh they would get, say, if they don't develop it, they would get a tax credit or something. I don't know. I mean, that's something the city council, we'd have to look at ideas, but and then they would be willing to help upgrade it to provide those properties because that's something that they're interested in doing. Uh I, I can think of people, individuals who've been here with properties that may be willing to do that. So you wouldn't have to buy it, but you would, you would be able to preserve it indefinitely with whatever kind of requirements the city decided to set that were creative, like it couldn't be developed for X amount of time or, or indefinitely, the development rights would go away, would, it would be a permanent uh place, and we could uh think about that creatively, then you could create some maps where you'd have them in all the streety areas perhaps where people would be willing to. And if we had a cadre of people who could develop expertise on effective ways to plant, which ones obviously want to go with native species, but which ones where, and how can we do it most efficiently and for least cost and get the most benefit? And then lastly, how do we get those areas which are very hot and don't have any tree canopy, those marginalized areas, and encourage the people there to participate by looking after those, teaching them better habits so that they're involved in their own communities.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Larson?
One additional thought, do we have in this plan uh a factor for roofs, building roofs and and their context and textures in such that would be um uh mitigating uh yeah, heat generation uh from the sun?
You're talking about reflectivity of the roof materials or?
I think in, in just the, the buildings is to have an incentive for
Yeah.
uh for a roof structure that uh was uh complimentary to the uh tree plan.
Yeah, that can certainly be incorporated, absolutely, because increasing the tree canopy is one clear stated goal, but an urban forestry program, you can really define that by your desire as a city, right? So what is the focus? What are the priorities? And what, what does um energy and climate change affect in your, your city? Buildings as well as vegetation. Yeah.
Now, there's a really pretty good-sized building in downtown Tacoma that has a uh total forested, it's not forest, actually, it's, it's uh, but it's green. There's plants on the roof. Yeah, and I was just thinking, golly, Lakewood could, you know, what if, what if the Lakewood Industrial Park had, you know, green roofs, you know, whether the two hundred thousand square feet or two million square feet of area.
If I recall, Ms. Spear, the areas where we are lacking in tree canopy, we want to expand are areas where we have a lot of asphalt.
Yes.
And um, so a, a challenge uh there, uh alternative um to tree canopy in an area where there's, where there's a lot of asphalt, we can't dig it up. You know, how do you overcome something like that?
Uh, you're absolutely right. And um obviously Lakewood was built out long before all of these ideas and goals were adopted and put into place here locally. Um, there's things, for instance, in a large parking lot. Um, do you look at tree islands? Do you look at actually tearing up parts of it to add vegetation? But there's also, if that's not a possibility, add a, a carport, a cover. You could have a vegetated roof on that. Or even just by having that cover, you're reducing the temperature of that asphalt and thereby the, the area around it. So whether it's not physically a tree, if that isn't going to happen, there are other things that can be done in large swaths of parking and uh and cement, uh that could help as well.
Ms. Talbo, you still have your hands up? Uh, do you have another?
Yeah, I just, I just had one last point and really it was just to tag on to, to that point you made, Ms. Spear is, and and just kind of my uh comment about just, I would hope that ultimately the, the tree plan, the urban forestry plan results in a tree replacement policy, especially for commercial areas and the town center. Um, but not, not just the town center, but commercial areas in general. I, I pick on the town center particularly because I remember when um those street trees went in, and I remember when they were just skinny little trees, and now they're full-blown, mature, very very beautiful-looking, ve- you know, they really do um have a person, give the town center a personality and and as we want, you know, in some cases, they compete with um future developments that, you know, we want to see areas redevelop. And so when we are faced with um having to uh, you know, I guess, lose vegetation, just making sure that we're replacing it uh in kind and and having a policy to do that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Spear, I have a question regarding the uh Attachment C, the twenty twenty-four Cooperative Plan Energy Climate Change Element Audit Table.
Uh huh.
Um, understand, and I, I can see where uh Lakewood should take lead and uh will take action to resolve some of these issues. But I don't quite understand how we can promote the generation, the transmission and the use of renewable energy. I mean, we can, we can do the uh um encourage the use of, but we can't encourage generation and transmission. That that's way beyond our, our league. That would be a three dash one. E C three dash one.
Okay.
And E C three dash two. Maybe I'm missing something there.
Um, so this is really uh anticipated to be in partnership with the utilities. And there are many things that they are doing regardless of the Lakewood city folk ever talking to them, but excuse me. Encouraging energy conservation and supporting consumption of energy produced by climate-friendly technologies.
That I, I can understand that to extent, but the one below.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, talking to, again, P S E T P U or Lakewood Light and Power about what sort of programs they could bring to the city of Lakewood to incentivize businesses and or individuals to use these alternate power sources on their own lot, on their own structure, and also talking to them about, are you still using some sort of power generation up, up your chain, meaning not hydropower, you're using coal somewhere to generate the electricity that's then uh used in the city of Lakewood? And what can we as a, as a municipality do to kind of tickle their fancy to look at other things? That's really what it's talking about. Um, and absolutely, it's not something that Lakewood's in control. We don't own the utility first and foremost, but it's also the scale of what we're talking about. What can one jurisdiction do?
That's Bonneville, Bonneville Power is uh where we get our electricity.
Right, for, yeah, for the most part, yep.
Okay. Okay, that's one question I had regarding that. Any of the commissioners have any other questions for Ms. Spears regarding her presentation? Thank you, Ms. Spear. And I thank Ms. Talbo and Mr. Lindholm for their contributions away from here. Away from home. At home. Ms. Spear, we have next in line, please.
Uh, next items, I just wanted to bring you up to speed on what's happening with the twenty twenty-five Comprehensive Plan Amendment docket list. Uh, if you'll recall, in October, yes, October, you uh passed along to the council a resolution that had eleven items recommended, many of which were required by state law, but there were some that were uh added in addition to that, including two that were the potential subarea plan areas. And then there was a third that was uh the idea of creating, uh the city council would have to do this, create a uh sales and use tax deferral program. So if you had a, an area of the city with uh, they call it significant commercial vacancy, and that's all defined in the, in the bill. Um, you could in, include this as a tool to help incentivize those properties being converted into housing of some kind. And the idea there is you're, you're spurring economic development in an area that's otherwise vacant, and you're also increasing housing units at the same time. The city council now, over the last few year, a few weeks, has been talking about these things. Uh, and I'm sorry, the last one that the city actually recommended to council that was not in front of you was there is next year a review of the Regional Growth Centers by Puget Sound Regional Council. Our downtown is what is called a Regional Growth Center, and as a result, Puget Sound Regional Council sends federal dollars for successful applications to Lakewood that we would not otherwise get if we did not have this center identified. This is where most of our jobs and um housing units are supposed to go in order to keep that status. So we requested, and it looks like they're going to include as one more item in the, in the docket list, preparing us a study to show that we meet the criteria. We need you to keep that center in place. But the other three items that the council uh spent some time on was the, the two subarea plan ideas and then the um question about whether or not to do the sales and and reach, excuse me, sales and use tax deferral program, and also just in general, the idea of taking commercial property and letting it be converted to residential. The council, after hearing about it from this, from the city and then talking about it amongst themselves, decided at this point, I think it amongst themselves, decided at this point, I think that's what we can anticipate Monday night, 18th, November 18th, is that those three will not be part of the package. They talked about it at the study session, the city actually recommended against the two sub-areas because of a number of different things. One was the policies in the comprehensive plan anticipate addressing those two issues in a different way. Secondly, if you were to try to incorporate Springbrook into the station district sub-area, that would require a new analysis of the planned action for Lakewood Station District as well as environmental impact. And three, there's the funding question for where, where the dollars would come from for both of those projects. The city was not interested in any way, regardless of what the city recommended, in the idea of creating this tax deferral program and bringing residential development into commercial areas, they wanted to preserve commercial spaces to be developed when the time was right and developers were interested in doing so. They kept those three items beyond the study session into the public hearing. There were no comments on any of those three that they had talked about, and so again, I anticipate that on the 18th, when they take their action, those three will not move forward. Having said all of that, with the sub-area question, the, the international district, which is larger than what was part of the recommendation this time, is something that's anticipated in the comp plan and in their own mind as a future sub-area planning area. And Springbrook, separate and apart from Station District, is also something that they would look to maybe do a sub-area plan at some point. So I don't know, you were there, Mr. Chair, if you want to add anything else?
Yes, no, that's fine, that's what I, and I, we needed to hear that explanation, because again, here's the situation where we recommended something, and it wasn't fully accepted, but reasons why, why. Okay, I thank you for that, for that feedback. Any questions from, from Ms. Talbo or Mr. Lindholm regarding what Ms. Spear just, just provided?
None from me, thank you.
All right. All right, good.
None from me, thank you.
All right, thank you both. Okay, Ms. Spear, thank you, and we'll, our next, in our next item in line is our, our Leahson is not here this evening?
Correct.
So upcoming meeting schedule?
As it stands right now, you're scheduled for no second meeting in November, but you are scheduled to come for the first meeting in December, which I believe is the second, the fourth, excuse me. So December 4th, there is a question though from the chair as to wanting to verify if there will be a quorum available on December 4th. So just wanting to, I think, check in and make sure enough folks will show up on the 4th of December.
Mr. Lindholm, will you, will you be available for our December 4th meeting?
I will be, yes.
Yeah, I will be as well.
Okay, then we will have a quorum then. Okay, we will continue on.
And then that would be the last meeting of the year. So again, there'll be discussion in, at this point in January regarding the 2025 chair and vice chair. Again, Mr. Chair was talking about whether or not action should be taking on the, taken on the 2025 chairs in December or in January. I think, actually, I just thought of something too, maybe it's in January, because sometimes terms end at the end of the year, and so if you're, you're voting in December, you may not have your 2025 slot of people. It so happens this time, there is nobody leaving with term limits, so if you wanted to do it in January, you could, it would be the same group of people deciding. So it's, it's up to you how you want to do that.
And I would encourage all to think about possibly filling those two positions, if call will serve, but I'd like the opportunity, give the opportunity to others who may want to serve in either of those two positions. And we talked earlier, Mr. Larson and I talked about having some young blood, and we have young blood here, so maybe one of the youngsters can step forward, but it's all up to them. We can talk more about this in December, but think about it, and we'll also pass that on to our two commissioners. Okay. Is that it, ma'am?
That is it.
Okay, is there anything else for the good of the order for any of the commissioners?
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
We thank you very much, Ms. Talbo, and likewise.